Yes and no. Other cities, some other cities don't exempt casual workers at all, say San Francisco and I believe Seattle. Other cities do, like Philadelphia and some in New York City. And the definition that you have is a combination of all of those, taking the best from each ordinance and trying to make it work and keep it limited for the use that was set forth to me as the direction we wanted to go.
Thank you. Because my understanding of this issue from conversations that happened a while ago was there was concern that folks who call in for shifts would then call back and use sick time for shifts that they had volunteered for. And I wondered, the New York approach took one that was more about saying that that behavior was not covered instead of the employees themselves were not covered? And I wondered if you considered that approach and why you didn't go with that version of exemption?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, I'm not exactly sure that I understand your question, but I'll try to answer it here. Some of what we took and is included in this ordinance was from New York City. In New York City, they do not exempt any healthcare providers. They exempt certain speech pathologists and physical therapists, et cetera, who are licensed by their Department of Education and are considered an on-call casual type situation. So we aren't addressing those. We are actually addressing some healthcare providers that provide healthcare. New York also had the four times the minimum wage because there's some concern about whether people want to be on-call workers or that's just what they can get as on-call. And the higher paid presumption, the higher you're paid, the presumption is you're more likely to want that setup than if you're less highly paid. It was also drafted in this way because in the healthcare industry, if you were just to use the phrase, those who work in the healthcare industry, that's broader, that would include everyone who works in the hospital cafeteria or provides janitorial services as well and works on-call. So there were various reasons as to how it ended up being drafted the way it was. I will note that none of this is really dealt with in the New York ordinance. It's dealt with in their frequently asked questions and rules, which again is where our Department of Civil Rights is going to have to expand and deal with the intricacies of actually implementing the casual healthcare provider provision.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then my other questions were more about enforcement. One was, well, one question I had was, as we look at the businesses that have under six employees, I think of the partnership recommendations, when they were looking at those micro businesses, there was still a provision that there would be protections against retaliation if workers used unpaid sick time? And I wondered if that was in this version of the ordinance, just with that different number?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, thank you for bringing that up. I neglected to say that. And yes, that the workplace partnership, a recommendation related to those who have less than the number of employees that are mentioned for full compliance must still offer unpaid time off and the other protections would apply.
And then just one final question, which was the phase-in period. So we've allowed for a pretty significant period of time before the ordinance begins, which would be July 1st of 2017, and then another 12 months of phased-in enforcement. You know, I think in particular for our most vulnerable low-wage workers, this issue of retaliation is considerable. And so I wondered if right now, so I think the ordinance right now doesn't treat retaliation differently during that phase-in period of enforcement. So I wanted to make sure that was correct. And then I just kind of wanted to flag that as a potential issue.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, that is correct, that the department would work with the employer and the employee impacted for mediation and corrective action. And so some of the same remedies would be applicable, but they would work together and not impose fines. None of those additional $15,000 fines, or $1,500 fines would be imposed.
I put myself in queue here for a couple of questions. So, comments. First, just thank you, Ms. Trammell yourself, for, I think, good work in presenting us with a product. And I know that you're here to just kind of hear what continues to be the direction and the questions on this. I personally really appreciate that a lot of this ordinance seems to track very closely to the partnership recommendations. There are some differences, and my guess is most of our debate and discussion is going to be on those differences than on the things that track closely to the partnership report. With, I would say for myself, probably the thing I have the most questions about is about this casual employee. And is this the best and most fair way to address the casual employees? Or is there another methodology that seems more appropriate? I know when we heard from the Workplace Partnership Group, they had talked to us with a suggestion that some of the casual employee concerns could be addressed in implementation. And I just, I feel like that is what happened in the New York model. I actually have probably spent more time than I ever thought that I would, looking at a variety of models of how these different cities have addressed or not addressed the question of this unique category of employees that are sometimes called casual and sometimes something that's kind of similar to that. So personally, I feel like that implementation approach seems to be a more fair and even-handed way to deal with it. I get concerned about putting a big exemption into the ordinance, that then there will be questions about fairness of why my business isn't an exemption? And then how many employees are then covered under the exemption that is in there? So I think both of those kind of sides to the equation come into play when you have the exemption right there in the ordinance, as opposed to a methodology for how you look at the implementation that then can maybe address the questions as they come up. So that would be my perspective on that, at least right now. I had, I know there were questions on the exemption on prevailing wage. I thought prevailing wage, so maybe this is a question. I thought, under Minnesota law, that prevailing wage, which just applies, and maybe you want to talk about how prevailing wage applies and when it applies, but for those particular employees that are paid a prevailing wage, that it anticipates that that would cover for those construction workers, things like time off, because they have such unique ways that their industry works with scheduling and working in a certain bunch of time and then sometimes having to work seven days of the week to get their work done and other things like this. So I'm not a prevailing wage expert, but I thought that some of the rationale behind this was that, under state law, prevailing wage is anticipated to be a rate that will cover some of those items, unlike a minimum wage, which is not anticipated to cover things other than just your exact time worked.
Chair Glidden, you are correct in that prevailing wage does, in the definition and calculation of a prevailing wage, it does include many benefits. It doesn't specifically include paid sick time, but it does account for paid vacation time in the statute. So my understanding of this is that actually, in the construction industry, those construction workers like what they've negotiated for prevailing wage and want it to be left as is.
Okay. And again, I feel like that's a little bit similar to us setting the minimum standard and the provision you have at the end of the ordinance that says, as long as you have something that would meet the minimum standard, such as a paid time off policy, that that could comply, which I think that is intended. So anyway, I just, I wanted to better understand what you thought the rationale was from your perspective and what else we need to learn about prevailing wage and how that does or doesn't cover this. So, all right. I have also had some questions that I've heard throughout this process about concerns regarding retaliation and aspect of retaliation, which might be threats by the employer or folks at the employer to report immigration status, questions or suspicions of immigration status. And I was curious if you thought this was a topic that should be addressed directly in the ordinance? Or is this something that more typically would be addressed in how civil rights would adopt some rules and regulations that would give examples of what could translate into retaliatory action?
Chair Glidden, I think that that is an area best dealt with in the rules.
And then the last question I had was how mediation might be utilized as a tool. And maybe this is just a question for civil rights, when they have an opportunity to think a little bit more. We haven't really gotten to that part of the presentation, but if, I understand there's going to be a recommendation that civil rights would be the enforcement agency. And so maybe that's a question for them when they've had time to think about this as to, looks like Brian is ready to go, how they think mediation might play into the administration and enforcement.
Thank you very much for the question, Chair Glidden. I think it's an excellent one.
Maybe would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Of course. My name is Brian Walsh. I am the senior investigator in the Civil Rights Department. Chair Glidden, thank you very much for the question. I think that this particular enforcement process offers a great deal of opportunity for alternative dispute resolution and mediation. And the goal, at least at this point, really would be to utilize mediation either formally or informally or any other kind of ADR. And we do that very successfully already in the Civil Rights Department and other types of enforcement actions and investigations. I think that these investigations, because the facts that we're looking to find are so specific and narrow, you either did or did not provide paid sick leave, that that can lead very quickly to everyone sort of getting on the same page about what it is that actually happened and why, and then perhaps reaching a mutually agreeable resolution or solution for the issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing other councilmembers. Councilmember Frye has another question.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So a couple of questions. If you go to 40.120, which is the appeals section, Ms. Trammell, and this is subsection D, this is in the instance when a final decision has been made by a hearing officer, and now there's the opportunity to appeal under Minnesota Stat 606.01. It says, "The department shall notify the employer of this right of review after issuance of the hearing officer's final decision." What if the hearing officer's decision is the opposite? In other words, they rule against the employee. Does the employee then have a right of appeal up to the state courts?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, no.
Why would we give one person the right of appeal and not the other? I guess, okay, I don't, it's a policy question.
I don't know if she had a response.
Maybe you had a response. I didn't want to be asking you something that was up to us to determine, but go ahead.
Well, it is, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, ultimately a policy decision, but we have said that the pursuit of a violation is within the sole discretion of the department. So department is going to be bringing those cases only that they actually feel that are very provable to start with. So I'm not anticipating many, if any, decisions that the department would proceed with that wouldn't be sustained ultimately.
So the-
If we look at some of the other cities, the vast, about half of the complaints relate to, "I earned the sick leave and I didn't, or earned or accrue the sick leave and I didn't get it credited to me." So, you know, there's, it's a factual type determination based on records and hours worked and those kinds of calculations. And the department's going to pursue those that are, that, yeah, that's the case or not the case. So there's some protection upfront to investigate those things and determine if there's enough to go forward.
Right. But if it's a factual determination, and I don't want to get into an argument here, but if it's a factual determination adverse to the employer, certainly it would also be a factual determination if it was adverse to the employee, thus necessitating a right of appeal for both.
Again, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, those are policy considerations that can be addressed.
And then, you know, my, and this is less of a question and more of just a stated If the sole discretion is to whether to appeal, or the sole discretion is to whether to bring enforcement up to the state courts is left up to the departments, then inevitably what you're going to get is a bunch of policymakers lobbying our departments insisting that they appeal or don't appeal a particular decision. Whereas if the individual had a private right of action to begin with, they wouldn't, it empowers the individual, they wouldn't be reliant on us to come forward with a rather political determination. It could be left to a legal determination, which, that's not, you can answer if you want, but it's really more of a point and less of a question.
All right.
Not to mention, well, sorry, Madam Vice President, you know, I don't know what the number of complaints and violations that are submitted to other jurisdictions are like. But what we, the situation that we don't want to get into is a very large number of complaints being submitted, our staff's inability to enforce those determinations, but then have no private right of action for an individual to have their grievance met, which basically means you have to bolster either staff, but plus, I mean, even if you do bolster staff, you're going to want to have some ability to go to the courts individually.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, we did not include a private cause of action because we don't believe that we can legally support the inclusion of that in there. It would not be defensible. And perhaps we can discuss this further.
Okay.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Councilmember Frye is raising an important point, but I just wondered if you could explain what a private right of action is? Maybe it's obvious, but just so everyone's on the same page who's listening to our discussion, so we're kind of starting with from the same information.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Bender, if an ordinance provided for private cause of action, we'd be saying to an employee, "If you think there's been a violation of this ordinance, you can bring a case in district court or other court of competent jurisdiction." And I'm saying there are legal problems with including that.
I am not seeing anyone else in our queue right here, so thank you very much, Ms. Trammell. Ms. Rivera Vandermine?
Thank you again. So we'll direct us to the next part of the staff direction, which is developing a recommendation for who should administer this policy. And as again, I assume that most of that would come in the first part of the presentation, some of these slides I'll go over very quickly, but wanted to at least share our thoughts for how we came to that recommendation. We share generally the Workplace Partnership Group recommendations regarding enforcement. And talk a little bit about civil rights. And I do want to note that we started last fall thinking about departments for whom the administration of this policy would be appropriate. We looked at four different departments throughout the city. We eventually narrowed those to the Department of Civil Rights and to the Business Licensing Division and CPED. And I should say that both were open and eager and ready to step up to the task. Ultimately, we thought that where, and you'll see some information about civil rights and some of the work that they do, but where they already enforce and have policies and procedures in place that are so closely aligned to this work, that that seemed to be the better fit as this work progressed forward. And that is why our recommendation moves forward with that. There are on this slide, some additional, provided by Mr. Walsh, some additional information about their mediation program and how they use that forward, along with some information and some documentation that just came out of Civil Rights' most recent results conference. As we think about how this policy should be implemented, we also, again, going to Ms. Trammell's point, we concurred broadly with the Workplace Partnership's recommendation and what we heard from both residents and businesses alike, that there's a lot of outreach that needs to be done, that we really wanted to involve a lot of community engagement at all levels and with a variety of techniques and tactics. I note that in our conversations, and I will tip my hat off to IGR, who's not here, IGR staff reached out to the, actually to all 22 jurisdictions who have enacted this, some of which provided some more information than others. But in their conversations with the other jurisdictions that had enacted similar policies, the bits of advice that we got that for them were the most helpful were, in fact, a really, really broad outreach program with sufficient time in which to develop rules and guides and those frequently asked questions that Ms. Trammell was alluding to. We have copies and templates of other jurisdictions that have done that, that we're happy to share and forward. And I think they provide illuminating detail because they go to scenario examples and they really help explain particularly to businesses, but to also residents and employees alike, what the case is. If this happened, or if I worked X hours, how would this apply? If, to Councilmember Palmizano's point, I am somebody who's just driving by or providing this kind of services, how would that be counted? So again, we'd be very happy to provide you with those, but it concurs with that recommendation from best practices of those jurisdictions, that is ultimately the best way to move a policy like this forward. I also note, and I don't recall if Ms. Trammell also made the nuance, that in that first year of phased implementation, that while we want to be more remedial and corrective in nature, that that does not necessarily apply to those folks that are continuously violating that good faith. That there will be people throughout that period, perhaps, that continue to, despite the corrective action, despite the notification, despite the fact that civil rights has been working with them to correct their violations, decide that in that year, they're going to be continuously violating this policy. And there are some exceptions to those, so that that remedial nature of the approach really responds to new violations. We also recommend, and it is something that we will come back for on Council the whole on May 25th, with the creation of the advisory body to assist in reviewing the impact and the outcomes of this policy. And we will be prepared to discuss that when we come back on May 25th. Again, as we mentioned before, one of the key things that I just wanted to highlight as well, that one of the other reasons that we suggested and recommended a 12-month start period for the effective date of this ordinance was a really candid conversation that we had with the Department of Civil Rights, where they had just recently implemented some changes to the Office of Police Conduct Review. They did that in nine months and frankly said they so wished that they had been a little bit more thoughtful, that they had just had a little more additional time to make that a smoother transition. So we wanted to honor that experience within our city. Well, we asked the Department of Civil Rights to provide us, and we also spoke with Communications and NCR, to provide us generally with what a communications plan might look like as we identify it. And so in broad strokes, we want to start the work of identifying this summer and in fall, the key messages, to work on those frequently asked questions, to work on those rules and regulations, and then really spend the rest of the fall, winter, spring, seeking input from community on what some of those frequently asked questions and rules and guidelines mean, and also figuring out how to best explore and pursue different avenues. We want to make sure that our employers and our business community really are cognizant of what this is. Our intent is not to have gotcha moments within our communities, but really to make sure everybody understands the breadth and the scope of this rule. We also want to make sure that our employees are cognizant of what rights they have as they go into the workplace with a new policy such as this, and who that singular point of contact will be if they feel that they need something addressed.
Just a moment. Councilmember Kano has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nuria, you can feel free to answer this now or at the end of your presentation. So first of all, I'm glad to hear about the communications plan. I was shopping on Lake Street yesterday and chatting with some of the Spanish-speaking Latino business owners, and they weren't aware that this was happening today. And I made a call to David Rubador yesterday or the day before, just asking us to prepare a multilingual engagement plan for the public hearing that will be hopefully coming up soon. I'm hoping you can tell us a little bit more about that date. I understand it might have shifted. We were maybe thinking it was going to happen in June, and now it might happen sometime in May. So making sure we have a multilingual engagement plan to promote the public hearing that will happen around this paid sick policy and ensuring that our Spanish-speaking business owners are aware of this, as well as our Somali-speaking business owners and other diverse communities. But my question was more, as you were talking about this 12-month preparation timeline, I'm just curious, did the partnership or the staff discuss the bandwidth of this particular structure to potentially take on other issues like a minimum wage raise? If we do move forward with that? If we take up the issue of fair scheduling and wage theft? Has there been any conversations about how this particular structure could or could not take on more initiatives if the council were to move forward on raising the wage and move forward on doing more workers' rights initiatives?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Kano, to respond quickly to the last question, I can say that we have not discussed additional policy considerations in here as yet. We have really been focused on the policy direction at hand. I will add to that, that, and perhaps this goes to the first part of your question in terms of the communications plan, that what we found, not only in pursuing a communication strategy and a listening session and strategy with the Workplace Partnership Group, really honing in on different stakeholders, that the lessons learned from those 14 listening sessions really, I think, are driving, and because we had such great staff involvement with NCR and communications, they're really driving us as a city to think about communications on a multitude of initiatives, not just this one, in different ways. In this year's budget, the city coordinator's office received monies to think about an enterprise communication strategy. And this kind of thing plays into that as we look to right-fit communication styles and need, whether it's different formats, videos or social media, or the regular printed flyers, or whether it's about doing so in different languages to reach the broadest amount of community possible. And so I believe that this kind of strategy will be something that you'll see more and more involved in for a variety of purposes as we implement, and we have big projects like this moving forward in a variety of formats. We certainly expect to be announcing when we have a date, and I do not myself know the date of a public hearing, and perhaps that will come at the end of this presentation. But we certainly would anticipate sending out a broad communications plan to ensure the broadest participation available.
I don't see other questions. Thank you. Terrific.
Going to the last staff direction, which is really about mitigating some of the concerns that we heard from a variety of stakeholders, but in particular, we certainly did hear some from the business community on how a policy like this would impact. And I, again, want to applaud the thoroughness of the draft ordinance because I believe that we can see that many of the issues that we saw are addressed in the draft ordinance, ensuring retaliation is prohibited, ensuring provisions for notice, provisions about PTO policies, et cetera. We had other recommendations that go beyond the scope of the city's ordinance and particularly involved work or suggestions involving our legislative agenda. I will note that we have passed those on to IGR, and they have passed that on to their Legislative Agenda Development Policy Liaison Team to see how those policy objectives could fit into the legislative agenda or how they fit into some of the other things that we have currently running. Focusing on particularly the impact that this would have on new and existing business employers, certainly concerns over possible administrative burdens, concerns about the effects on the local economy and growth. And I just really want to highlight here that just as we heard many comments from employees and heard some heartfelt stories about employees, about what it means not to have access to sick time and what it meant for them to not be able to take time off for- off for their children's illnesses and so forth, I, I just want to highlight that the concerns that was brought forth by the business community in general were no less genuine or real. They were also very heartfelt about what this would do in terms of what they need to track, what they need to do with their existing policies, how does this impact Minneapolis, concerns and suggestions on why this isn't taken up at a state or a national level. I will only have to say that staff look to research and look to other jurisdictions to get some advice. We certainly are not the only city that has moved forward or is moving forward on this type of policy. And so, as we did our best practices research and contacted other jurisdictions, what we can say right now is that while some of those concerns, and again, I want to recognize the validity and the genuineness of those concerns, that they have not played out as a reality in most of the jurisdictions that we have found. I note to a publication of the U.S. Department of Health, and citing some studies that they found, and additionally provided some reports, statements from the most recent reports, and in particular, New York just came out with one last summer, that they found New York's economy has thrived and so forth. And so, we want to be attentive. I, I don't want to dismiss it, and we want to make sure that we are attentive to those needs, and one of the reasons, one of the ways in which we're going to address those concerns is by developing an evaluation mechanism. And I think that's something that has not been part of other cities, as we looked at this, not every city, and it's why we have so little documentation about perhaps the impact of policies like this in other jurisdictions, is not a lot of people, some of these policies, A, are new, or newer, and some of just jurisdictions haven't spent the time or the money to evaluate, to go back and see what the impact on their economy is, or if it made an impact in health. And so, we want to be very conscious and deliberate about creating a mechanism in which we look at the policy and find if we do have unintended consequences, find if there are things that we need to fix, or to tweak, or to address in subsequent years. There's a provision in the draft ordinance requiring an annual evaluation. We also want to think about, and will be including that in the May 25th presentation, as we talk about perhaps a more permanent structure, an advisory board that speaks to workplace issues, and we wanted to incorporate some of the partnership, the really valuable partnership approaches that were presented forward by our Workplace Partnership member, Steve Kramer, I think, workplace recognition and best practices and peer-to-peer counseling and so forth. There are really valuable and rich suggestions, and I would hope that this body would continue to take those into account. We did have the Department of Health decided to, there was a pre-application funding opportunity, and so, waiting to hear a bit about whether or not we would be invited to submit a bid for a two-year grant that would at least help us evaluate the health impacts of such a policy. And so, we will let you know if that moves forward, if such, that would be, we would be invited to submit an application by June 8th. I also want to highlight here the work of folks around the city, and what we heard really clearly from a lot of business owners and small businesses in particular, was that there was just consternation about them feeling supported by the city in terms of the work that they do, and I want to acknowledge that. I want to say, beyond or perhaps outside the scope of the work that the Workplace Partnership were doing, staff was doing some really, and continues to do, some really great work in this arena. And I wanted to highlight some of the work that's coming out of the current, either Business Made Simple or ELMs, for those that aren't familiar with ELMs, it is the Enterprise Land Management System. It is what will replace how we track and how we automate our inspections process, how we grant licenses, how we do permits. And so, the fact that we are now currently using an unsupported, an outdated product, and we will, by October of this year, we hope be launching and going live with a new ELMs product, and that is one way that we're actually taking the opportunity to streamline and to rethink our current processes. And if we can try to do that now, in advance of that, then hopefully we will also be making that easier for folks as that moves forward. We have a small group that's been constituted under the Business Made Simple report that was issued, that really talked about developing strategies for the counter experience, and we're really trying to keep that customer experience in mind as we think about, how does it feel when somebody comes to the counter, and how does it feel differently depending on whether somebody's used to coming to the city, whether somebody speaks a different language, whether somebody has just moved here and looking to start a business for the first time, and trying to make sure that we know what that, what that looks like and feels for customers. An additional recommendation that comes out of the Business Made Simple report was the use of perhaps a navigator, where we have a point of contact where somebody could come in and say, I don't need to repeat my story to three, or four, or five, or six other people, I just need some answers to my questions, and I know it goes across departments, can I speak to somebody who knows what I need and can get back to me? And so, some of those additional considerations are going on right now. We have a consultant who is known to the city and has, and really knows our process really well, who's creating and simplifying checklists in a much more visible manner, but also more simplified manner, that really speak to, how do you start a business, how do you manage a business, how do you grow a business? At the end of the day, that's really what we want. And so, we've got some ongoing work that's, that's moving, and some really strategies that are aimed at that. We're also currently involved in mapping all those touchpoints where businesses come into play across departments, to really assess where that's landing, and if there are ways to reevaluate our current resources now and configure them in a different way that would make ease of making, doing business with the city, something that's much more supported for staff. I wanted to also highlight, as we think about our business community, that the current supplier diversity efforts as well are delving into some of that, and that's outside, again, of the scope of the paid time off policies, but increasing certification options for small and minority and women-owned businesses, so that people can have more of the piece of the procurement pie, if you will, from a city perspective. Creating a race and gender neutral program that I know Council Vice President Glidden and Councilmember Quincy are very supportive of, to figure out how do we continue to support small businesses as we move forward, and expanding the BTAP program, the Business Technical Assistance Program, that is already happening in this year, and thinking creatively about ways in which to continue to leverage that as we move forward. So, we hope that in some of these actions that are ongoing, and some that hopefully the, at a board such as the Advisory Board and conversations, continued conversations with yourselves, that we will continue to address those concerns that were brought forth by the business community. And with that, I at least finished that end of the presentation and can also stand for questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions right now, there may be a couple as I say that. So, and I'll maybe, just as folks are preparing themselves with some questions, is that we are going to be finalizing today a schedule for both public hearings, where we will take public comment, and a, then a separate special meeting of the Committee of the Whole, where we will move this draft ordinance and consider amendments to it and vote on it. And so, we will, we are trying to work on what has ended up being a few little just scheduling challenges, so that's why I'm saying I, I wish I would tell you the dates right now, but we will today make an announcement and use our Communications Department to help us publicize that far and wide. So, with that, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a big thanks to staff for their work on this, to my colleagues, to the folks on the partnership, to the advocates, to all the residents and the small business owners that have been a part of this process. It's just wonderful to see us get to this point. We have such a balanced policy in front of us, and that we have the pieces in place to really make this successful, and I'm very excited about it. I look forward to the public hearing, and I'll have more comments at that time. But I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone involved so far into this point. Thank you.
Well, I'm not seeing, oh, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just echoing that, I think it's, the level of detail of the questions that we were asking today, I think, indicates the high level of consensus that we have on the big directions of this policy, and that's really a testament to the work of the 15 volunteer members of the partnership group, all the community folks who got involved in the businesses who attended the meetings, all of the staff time that went into this. So, I think we're in a really great position here to get these final details worked out and get over the finish line of this year-long process to develop our paid sick time ordinance. And I think this piece that you have highlighted at the end here about, particularly our small businesses, but our whole business community in Minneapolis, you know, we've had the chance to really have a lot of contact over this past year, and I just wanted to voice my own support for the work that I know is already happening and potentially going beyond into some of the recommendations that we're hearing from the Twin Cities Metro Independent Business Association, from our own individual businesses, from the Main Street Alliance, just really picking up that torch and moving forward to make sure that we are supporting the job creators in our city and the businesses that really are keeping our economy growing. So, I think it's a really exciting place that we're at here with the draft. And I guess I should just quickly say thank you to Council President and Council Vice President for all the work that you did together to get us to this great point here.
Councilmember Gordon.
I also appreciate the, the work. I'm really glad that we have one ordinance that we're looking at today, and I know there were some, some things that got worked out along the way to get us to this point. I think it'll be really important in the weeks ahead, before the public hearing and at the public hearing, that we hear back from our, our people who served on the partnership, also the general community, so we can understand what they're thinking about the, the draft now that it's out here. I don't think this is the appropriate place for us to start trying to amend things, but I anticipate that that place would be at the meeting where the public hearing is. I'll be doing a little bit of work based on the questions that I definitely flagged for everybody here about the issues that I have about who's excluded and is that the right, do we really have the right mix yet? And I'm, I'm concerned that we are leaving out some workers that should be included in this, and that's kind of the focus that I'll be working on. And so, I'll anticipate a great public hearing. And my understanding is it'll probably be in the next four weeks that we'll be expected to be done with this and pass something. Is that correct?
So, thank you, Councilmember Gordon. So, yes, we are hopeful, and again, I just, we have some last details in terms of making sure that we're really confident. Again, this is a really important ordinance to every single member of the city council here, and so, we have a great desire from all the council members to be able to participate in all the remaining processes, so that they're fully engaged in this process, and we want to do our best to make sure all our council members can, can do that. We are hopeful that we might be able to have a schedule where we would be able to vote at our full council meeting, May 27th, but we need to double-check that that is the case. And again, we will be releasing a schedule for a public hearing, and then a separate special meeting of the Committee of the Whole, and that's probably the meeting where we would talk about amendments and those other types of things, and have that debate about what should be the final version of the ordinance. So, I am not seeing any other comments. I want to, again, thank everyone who has been part of this process to date, and thank also our staff for, I think, doing a great job in presenting us with the product that is the result of the Workplace Partnership recommendations and some additional materials. And with that, let's receive and file the reports before us. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nuria.
Thank you.